This public forum is called to order. We'll start tonight with the Pledge of Allegiance in a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. So our agenda tonight is loose. This isn't a typical public meeting. This is more of an information session, an opportunity for our water rate customers and our neighbors to have an opportunity to see all the information, ask questions, and have your questions answered. So the agenda tonight will be an introduction, a brief history of the Cedar Lake Water Utility, utility management, proposed rates, how water bills are calculated, and then a discussion, Q and A. If the meeting goes to 7:30 or passed, at around 7:30, we'd take a brief recess. I want everybody to have as much time as they feel they need to ask questions. So I just want to make sure that we have a break in there somewhere where people can refresh themselves or use the restroom. So at 7:30, we'll break if we need to. So we'll start tonight with introduction. Town Council, we are also the Utility Board members. So Ralph, if you want to start, tell people who you are, how long you've served on the council, and we'll go right down the line.
Okay. I'm Ralph Muller. I'm on my ninth year on the council and for Ward 4.
John, introduce yourself.
You betcha. John Foreman was elected on the council in 2008 and served in a few of the various committees within our town of Cedar Lake.
Julie Rivera, Ward 3. I've been on the council for six years.
Randy Niedmeyer, Ward 5. This is my 11th year on the council. I serve on the Redevelopment Commission as well.
Rick Sharp, Ward 7. This is my fifth year on the town council.
Colleen Cheban, Ward 6, year one. I just completed.
Bob Carnahan, over 30 years of service, Ward 1.
Our town manager.
Rick Everly. Took my position here on October 19 of 2020.
Our clerk treasurer.
Jennifer Sandberg.
Any other staff here tonight? We have Chief Fisher, Cliff Rowe. Is it Sergeant?
Commander.
Commander. I can never remember. Commander Kilgore. So next, our consultants. You want to start, Dave?
Yeah, I'm Dave Osgood. I'm the town attorney.
Neil Sundstad with East Engineering.
And I'm Chris Janoff in Bozeman, Kansas.
And I'm Sue Hayes and I am now employed by Cedar Lake and have been involved in this work.
And I'm Phil Passan, and I'm in Barstow.
Okay.
We also have John Capora from the Plant Commission.
Okay. Thanks, John. I didn't recognize you with a mask.
Yeah, I thought it was changing. I looked a little bit. Or better.
So we'll start tonight with kind of why we're here. We want to answer the questions of the how, the why, and the what. Cedar Lake acquired its water utility back in 2009. It was the West Side Utility. It used to be Utilities Inc. And in 2010, the Robbins Nest and Crystal Oaks Water Utility was acquired. Before that point, Cedar Lake did not have a municipally-run utility to its name. And it's one of the things that kind of hindered our ability to grow the community in a responsible way is having these little private utilities. Like I said, this all happened before I was on the council, but that's the reason why the town went into the utility business was to be able to expand and provide consistent service as we go forward. At the time the utilities were acquired, the rates that were currently in place at that time were required to be adopted as part of that acquisition and had to stay that way for a minimum of five years. Over the time of our community growth and increasing aging infrastructure, some of those rates have become quite insufficient to continue to fund the water utility. So over the last several years, an analysis started to see where our opportunities were, how much money was needed to sustain the utility, expand the utility, and improve it. So that's really how we got here tonight. And as of 2018, when we filed our rate petition with the IURC, the water utility was nearly broke, and it was not in very good condition. So we were faced with a choice to either move forward with this or sell it. And we all agreed on the council and utility board that we needed to give this a shot because it's better that the people have control of their own utility than a private for-profit company. So we'll start this off and just dive into this process tonight to talk about where we're at in the process. So Chris, if you want to jump in. Chris has been our lead attorney in the negotiations with the IURC, so he can tell you where we're at in the process and where we go from here. So Chris, go ahead.
Sure. And I'm not going the right direction. You all let me know. But this started a couple, quite two and a half years ago. The town wanted to implement a system development charge or connection fee for new development to help them pay for some of the facilities that the town was going to have to install and meet the demand for the new growth in the area. So we started planning that in mid-2018, went to the commission at the end of 2018, received an order approving a system development charge or a connection fee of approximately $2,500 in mid-2019. There was a lot of back and forth. It's an administrative process. But one of the things that came out of that was they agreed to allow the town to implement the $2,500 connection fee, but they mandated that the town come back and change their rates within three years. And not only change the rates, but the town at that time had a series of different rates. Different customers paid different things. And while that's okay under Indiana law, they thought some of the differences were too much. And they said, you need to come back in within three years and address these varying rates, which we did. Within the last year, we fought a case with the IURC. The IURC approved new rates that are approximately, on the whole, 15% higher. But some of the rates were down here and some were up here, and they're now all about the same place. And we are out of commission. That is done. And we look at, we're looking to implement the rates later this year, probably October, November, somewhere that way. So that's where we've been. That's where we are now. And I think by the end of the year, you'll see the new rates up there.
And to add to what Chris said, the first part of this was we really thought that we needed to approach that the growth should pay for some of the growth. And so that's where the system development charge came in, was that the new customers that hook up to utility would be paying that $2,500-plus charge to hook up to the utility. Our old system development charge, I believe, was around $800, if I remember that.
$580.
$580?
Yeah.
Yeah, so it was very low, and we felt like that was an opportunity to recoup some. But like Chris said, the IURC then countered that we had to make all of our rates the same across the town. So that was part of the order that was given to us as being able to approve the system development charge that we requested. Neil, if you could talk a little bit about where the utility was in 2009 and '10 and some of the improvements that we've made between then and now with our current finances available.
Sure. When those systems were acquired, they were operated in a manner that we're doing better than they were then. We've made significant upgrades at the parish pump station in terms of pumps, controls. We've done quite a bit of improvements in terms of water main breaks, water main extensions for service. We've done the same thing at the Havenwood system in addition to work that's been done by Public Works through your staff and Director of Operations to approve the equipment and the building over there at Havenwood. And we've done additional testing, some of those things that were required by the IURC. And those have been done not only at the Robbins Nest Station, the Havenwood Pump Station, but the Parish Pump Station as well. We've also made additional upgrades to the Robbins Nest system in terms of reliability, backups, and we have more to come. But the majority of those items that the town has had completed over the last 10 to 11 years are just frankly due to items that are past their functional life that you inherited. And they were not necessarily things that were expected, but they were necessary to provide that safe service of portable water to your residents and ratepayers.
What are some of the things in the near future with the increase in revenue that the customers can expect as far as infrastructure improvements?
On infrastructure improvements, we're looking at an additional elevated tank on the east side, additional production facility, pump upgrades at the Robbins Nest system, and a transmission main to connect that additional production facility to the system to provide not only additional ability to meet the max day, but the peak hour and the fire demand, which is unfortunately, at least on the east side, which is something that's sorely overdue.
So right, you know, one of the things that we have to do as a water utility is be able to support fire protection. The water tower that's on the west side of the lake, when I first moved into Utopia in 2002, that water tower wasn't there. It didn't get erected, I think, till, what, 2005?
Yes.
That tower was put up really solely for fire protection to have the pressure to be able to support it. Right now, on the east side, if we were to have a large-scale fire, we would have to bring tanker trucks in to support that. Because at peak usage, the pressure that's generated from the Robbins Nest well is not enough to, at peak usage, support fire suppression. So it's one of those things we would have to rely on tankers from our community and other communities to fight a large-scale fire right at this point. So it's also, this is a public safety initiative as well as a needed initiative to support the growth of the community and the future of the community.
And Neil, I have a question. Under these new rates, isn't the minimum quantity that is billable per month gone down considerably? Didn't we used to have 4,000 gallons?
We're going to be going over that when we go to Sue, John.
Okay, very fine.
Yep. I'd love to answer you, but I trust the person.
And I think, too, it's important for all the people in the audience to know that, and maybe Randy mentioned this prior to me walking in. A few years ago, we looked at getting out of the Indiana Utility Regulatory Commission because the costs for the water utility to have to always be in Indianapolis for decision-making is not needed for a municipality. However, it is needed for private water companies. So that was something we toyed with a few years ago. It was, you know, we received much remonstration, and people just thought we were trying to do something crazy. But quite honestly, it would have saved us as a community considerable money, hundreds of thousands of dollars.
And we'll be prepared to show you those costs that were attributed with having to go in front of the IURC to do this, as well as what Chris presented, which was they ordered us to, as part of our agreement on the system development charge on the new homes, they ordered us to change our rates within three years and make them all equal.
Wish we were also given a form that there were only two or three cities and towns that were hooked to the Indiana Regulatory Commission. I don't know if it's still just two or three or if we're alone.
I believe about 94 or 95% of all municipally-owned water utilities are out of the IURC. And part of that reason is because government bureaucracies don't necessarily care, and they're not really here to protect you. The best accountability with any kind of utility is the fact that you can go to the voting booth every four years and make those decisions on your own local elected officials. The folks in Indianapolis, they don't live here, and they're just there to support their bureaucratic function. And what we saw in this process was a bureaucracy that seemed to be more concerned about the impact on developers rather than on residents.
Yeah, and I just wanted to say, too, we're close to Lake Michigan. However, we're not able to get Lake Michigan water, folks, because we're in the Kankakee watershed, not the Lake Michigan watershed. So.
Running the wrong side of the Continental Divide.
And our sewer treatment plant is south, so therefore, we're not able to run it back into the lake. And that's like a pact between Canada and all the states that butt up to Lake Michigan. So in case anyone's wondering why we have wells and all of this. So that was my last point, sir.
Rick, can you talk a little bit about our water department, our staff that supports the water customers and the water infrastructure? Tell the public a little bit about what we do in maintaining this infrastructure and the people that we have on staff and some of their credentials.
Well, if you don't mind, I'd probably defer to you on that.
Okay.
My not having been here long enough to know those numbers yet, Randy. I know we have, we only have, I believe, it's four people in the water department itself out of our roughly 20 Public Works workers. We've got four in water works and I believe four in sewer and the rest.
One of them is split between sewer and water.
Right. We have a superintendent, but if you don't mind, I'll defer to that.
Yep, absolutely.
Thank you.
You have superintendent, your superintendent who makes sure your daily water testing is done, ensures that the pumps are running, the backups are there. They do your meter reading, they check the water mains, do hydrant flushing. We do that internally. We very seldom source that out. They're there to answer your questions on Facebook just about 24/7. Whenever there's an issue and someone sees one, we have someone on-call 24/7 every day of the week if something should arise with the water utility. Having the in-house staff, they know our systems instead of having it outsourced to someone else, able to respond with the resources we have available to us through our Public Works Department and the additional staff should we need them. They do your testing on the new subdivisions and your pressure testings with the assistance of our engineer.
We have, we have weekly, no, I'm sorry, we have monthly staff meetings with Neil and the guys from Public Works and the Sewer and Water Department. And I've been impressed with the level of knowledge and what I would call just general caring about the utility that I've seen from our utility, the eight folks in the utility. Ryan Kuiper is our water superintendent, and every time I've got a question of him, he's got a ready answer for me. I've been impressed with that.
Additionally, they do have your water operator certifications that are required by the state for our size distribution system.
An advantage to having an in-house water utility like we do is that when there are large-scale projects such as major road rebuilds where there's new water mains and things installed, the revenue from the water utility can help to support those projects. Without a municipally-owned utility, you have to rely on other revenue sources, which a lot of times involves borrowing against property taxes, which increases tax rates. So these are things that having utilities to support the entire function of the town helps to keep your town independent and with the ability to fund large-scale projects. There's two types of costs in a water utility. Your operational costs, which is the day-to-day providing service. Whether we use the utility or not, there's a certain amount of cost that goes with just having it in the ground. Your capital cost, which is your long-term investments in infrastructure. Things like what Neil talked about is the construction of a new elevated tank in the Crystal Oaks neighborhood. That's roughly a $1-plus-million project to just construct that tank. And then the rates have to be sufficient to cover the costs themselves. There's no other subsidies that we can rely on to boost up the function of the water utility. It either survives on its own or it dies. So the question that needs to be answered, why new rates? We've went over some of that stuff. Providing safe and reliable drinking water is always job number one. And maintaining financial stability, which I went over some of that. We worked with our in-house consultant now, Sue Hayes. She used to be with London Witty Group. And Sue is a special utility accountant for us now. And she can go into the formulation of those rates and how we got to where we are. We went through the IURC as were required as a member. There's increased demand, obviously, growing population, and our system is aging. The Robbins Nest utility, I believe, was completed in 1994. And so that infrastructure there, some of it has been improved, but it's aging as well. There are many things that are getting older, and it's been well broadcast on news all over the country that the number-one need in infrastructure across this country is to improve the water utility because all over the United States, the utilities and the infrastructure are aging and about to become dangerously outdated. And then, as I said, replacing the aging infrastructure. So with this, I want to turn over to Sue Hayes to talk about where our rates were, where they're going, and how we got to that result. So Sue, the floor is yours.
Where our rates were before, we did have three different rate structures in the building. One was in what we call the west side, the utilities sink area, and the lakeside development. Those were all in one series of rates. Robbins Nest subdivision, a part of the Robbins Nest Water Company that we acquired, that was on another set of rates. And then the Crystal Oaks subdivision was on a third set of rates. So what we were charged to do in order to get the system development charge on the side of the commission, the IURC commission, was that we had to leave a single, applicable to all customers within our water utility. What we did find out was while the Robbins Nest area subdivision and the old utilities sink for the west side and the lakeside areas, they had the same structure. That means the first 4,000 gallons is one rate. The next 4,000 gallons is another rate per thousand gallons. What we found, though, is that the Robbins Nest rates were 69% less than what the rates that were being charged on the old utilities sink for the west side. And so right there is an issue that we have to address is because, number one, is the structure of how we use, correct? And then what, how we bring them together? We also looked at Crystal Oaks because Crystal Oaks is just $7 per 1,000 gallons. So it is totally different than the other two areas. So what we did is, well, what I did was to analyze the usage of all customers over 28,900 of deals. And I looked on a month-by-month basis, the size of meters, you know, the type of customer class. And so what we found was, and I did talk with engineers about it, too, is the fact that our rate structure that we currently have for the west side and for Robbins Nest, where we go to declining block structure, we use more and pay less. So that was still applicable, and we felt that it was very defensible at the IURC. And I believe, Chris, that we found out it was. They did not argue at all with keeping that same structure. Where the issue comes then is what the impact is on that. What we had to look at, too, was the current costs that we were assigning to the water utility. And where everybody was saying they have four dedicated employees for water utility, we were not paying four dedicated employees to the water utility. They were being subsidized by other places within the town. And you might say that, well, it's all town money. But in a utility, we are, it's called an enterprise entity in the community, and it is supposed to be standalone and support itself. So what our first charge was, is we had to look at, and I did this for all of the costs, not just payroll, but all of the costs. What should water utility actually be paying? And that was not just a decision made by me because I worked with the council a lot of the time saying, hey, guys, if we totally say it's standalone, we're going to have way over 100% of employees. I said, we can't do it all at once. So what we wanted to focus on is this. And I believe the common decision was, let's focus on our payroll first. Let's get payroll and all that. Those who work on the water utility or should have work, put up their bills assigned to them, they'll pay, assigned to them, let's get them in. So we did that. And then we, but we also looked, you know, at, okay, what are the other costs that should be assigned to them? And then when I came back and told them, I can't afford it, you know, the customers can't afford it, then that's when we backed up. And we said, okay, we'll do it this way. And you also have to understand that those capital projects that we were talking about that we need, they would be, we could finance them through long-term debt. So instead of roughly in the rate case, we had $3.915 million of a new debt issue going going in place, what we said is, okay, we need to go to the market or to wherever to look, to see, to leverage it so that we don't have, we can't pay it all at once. And you can't pay it over three years because we don't like to live here. Then that's not what we wanted. So what we did is, is we looked at the market at a time. We just understand this was pre-COVID. So obviously, the financial markets were quite a bit different. We had made a decision. We put forth all of the, all of the information, and we decided that we'd go, we'd stick with the market, which gave us the ability on timing of the projects and changing around like that. Well, during the process, once we got the rate case filed, then with COVID, we also had to add an additional source, potentially other debt issues, which would be the stigma of all of them. And they, they're good if you get in their typical program, which is a subsidized interest group. Right now, that subsidy is raised 2% on the debt. And you're not, depending on what you're rating with the rating agencies on the market issue repeating. You know, we weren't sure that debt would play out right, but we went ahead and did that so that we have more flexibility. The other reason we did that, too, is because we had heard, and it still is a possibility in the current federal administration, that there might be some stimulus-type money that would even bring that down lower for us. But we won't know until we're closer to the point that we go into it. But after all of that, and then coming out, you know, okay, we won't, we're not going to take up electric to where it really should be, we arrived at a 13.81% across-the-board increase. That means on the revenues only. But understand that there is quite a big difference of revenues that we collect from the west side as compared to the east side. And then when we break up the east side into Crystal Oaks and to Robbins Nest, there is quite a big difference there. Now understand, there's also a difference in customer numbers, too. So basically, what we said is we make the move to single-tier pricing in one movement. And obviously, the customers in Robbins Nest that were paying the lower rates by over 68% would have a larger increase. And that is, that is something to, you know, to think about. But we had to make a decision to file this, and this is all prior to filing the commission. And understand, when we went to the commission, we had, well, we had 15 data requests. There were. There were basically either 112 or 122 questions. Some of them came officially, some of them came calling up and saying, hey, the community wants your results, you're going to the consumer council office. And give and take back and forth. And when it came after the O U C C filed their testimony in this case, and they wanted to take it to a decrease of 4%, then an increase of over 10%, we said, no, that's too confusing. That is just so totally confusing.
I got a table, somebody tabled what they could.
Okay. So what we did is, when we filed our rebuttal testimony, then what we did was, we said, well, given everything that you've objected to, everything you want us to do, it's a 23.49% across-the-board revenue increase, which would make it even more larger for the, larger for the East Side customers. And, but then Chris worked, Chris, our regulatory attorney, worked with the O U C C attorneys, and we ended up settling at 15%. So it went from basically our original filing of 13.81 to 15%. And that is what they have approved us to charge. We do have the requirement that once the debt for the projects on the East Side and the West Side, because we do have the Utopia project on the West Side that's included in that, once that is issued, then we have to do what we call a true-up. So if by chance, we get a lower interest rate, we, we would be able to change, change the rates. We would be able to change the rates.
New reserve again. What's the dividing line between East Side and West Side?
Klein Avenue.
Klein Avenue.
Klein Avenue.
All right, so you're a West Side customer. You're, you're paying the highest rate that the town has already.
Thank you very much.
Yep. And, and I'm, I'm in that same water utility too. I, I live in Utopia, so I've been paying that higher rate for many years.
I mean, you're still paying for your water and you get an amount that is, I might just say, an amount that is a stadium out, and you have two people living in your home on the, maybe on the East Side. You have five people, which is extra laundry, you have cleaning. Why do you have to pay someone on the side? That's a lot of money.
Well.
From St. John, and we pay less than.
So if I can explain, Cedar Lake only has a little over 2,000 water customers. Okay? St. John probably has about 7,000. So they're able to spread, they're able to spread the cost out over more units. Cedar Lake's water utility was late to the game. Cedar Lake was a resort town. Every home used to have septic systems, their own wells. And as the town grew, the utility was really far behind it. So the town has really been in a disadvantage from its onset, because in 1967, when it became a town, it was kind of like the Wild West. There was really no grid system. St. John has had a grid system for over 100 years. Lowell has had that, other communities like Sherrville that accesses Lake Michigan water even better. So we're in a situation here where the utility is kind of young, and we don't have a lot of customers to spread the cost out. So that's why it, it costs so much.
But also, the reason you've been paying so much all these years, even if you didn't use any water whatsoever, if you go to Florida, you still have a very large minimum quantity usage, was because that's what the Utilities Inc. charged. And when we did take over the water, then we had to lock in to not doing anything, raise or lower, for the next five years. Because a lot of people have told me, I'm not even home and I'm paying for 4,000 gallons. So hopefully, this new 1,000 gallon usage, and perhaps Sue, or 2,000 rather, perhaps Sue's going to get into that, more will help explain it. So I think.
Also, when, when you have a water utility, whether you turn a faucet on or not, there's still a cost of upkeep. So that's why there's minimum charges on that, because there's a minimum cost to do business. If nobody used water and you didn't charge anything, the water utility goes broke and you don't have utility. So that's why there was that 4,000 gallon minimum charge, which, as John said, is being changed with this new water rate. So those people on fixed incomes, or there's just two people living in the house, they don't use much water, they're going to see a benefit from this. That was something that was important to the utility board and the council, that we made sure that, you know, the people who are using more, obviously, put more stress on utility, people using less are going to see a better benefit from it. So Sue, if you want to explain a little bit.
In the future, our bills may go down, depending on how many people are moving into the area.
Well, as. Right, as a utility grows, it does relieve pressure on the revenue side. So if we go from 2,000 to 4,000 customers, then that's something that you can't have tons of excess revenue that you're not using in government in, on the local level. I know in the federal government, they just do whatever the hell they want to print money. But here on the local level, if we're collecting money, we have to use it for something. And, and that's governed by statute. So if all of a sudden the water utility finds itself in a situation where it's flush with cash, we've either got to have projects to invest in, or we've got to give our customers rate relief. So Sue, if you want to talk about the minimum charges.
That was another step that, well, what I was charged with was, look at that and tell us what makes, what should be our minimum charge. Because right now, the East Side, which is, I'm sorry, the Robin's Nest subdivision, their minimum charge is based on 4,000 gallons. Crystal Oaks' minimum charge is based on 3,000 gallons. And the West Side is based on 4,000 gallons. So in the analysis of taking all of the bills and the consumption and doing a frequency analysis on it, we found out that 2,000 gallons is, would be the appropriate minimum consumption to charge for. And so what it would be is like, if you're on the West Side, which is the old Utilities Inc. area, then you're currently paying $36.04 as if you're for 4,000 gallons minimum. So if you charge, if you're consuming two, you're paying 36.04. Now, what we had approved is, it's on 2,000 gallons, so it would only be $20.72. So the biggest impact on, from the lowering of the minimum is on the West Side, because the West Side had the lowest average consumption anyway, but yet they had the higher charges. For Robin's Nest, the current rate for the minimum is 21.86, and that's 4,000 gallons again, and it will go down to the $20.72. Not, it's a 5.2% reduction for those customers. And then in Crystal Oaks, the current minimum is 21.50 for 3,000 gallons, but they will be paying the same minimum of 20.72, which is a 3.63% decrease. On the, on the West Side, the, the old Utilities Inc. area, the decrease is 42.51% from minimum. But you see, when I, when I reduce that revenue from them, okay? From what we were getting to what we would be getting, then I have to recover that revenue from the, the other rates. And that's where it's all built in. So, but, but you will now see that reduction also on 3,000 gallons. So if, if, if you're two people, but you just go over the 2,000 minimum, on a 3,000 gallon bill on the West Side, it was still the 36.04 because of the minimum. And now it will, it will be 31.08, which is a 13.76% reduction. There is an increase at 3,000 gallons to the, there's an increase on 3,000 gallons to the Robin's Nest subdivision because of the fact that now you will be running through the block rates.
Can we flip the slide to the water rates, current and new?
Number nine.
Yeah.
Right there. That way the folks online can see what we're talking about.
But what I did is, I went through and I, I did you a comparison for 2,000 gallons, 3,000 gallons, 4,000 gallons. And then our system-wide average residential, commercial consumption is 4,769 gallons. And currently, the West Side customers spend $41.82 for that. They will go up to 48.08 because the blocks increased. The Robin's Nest subdivision currently pays for that same 4,769 gallons, $25.28, and they will go up to the 48.08. And then Crystal Oaks currently pays the 33.88, and they'll go up to the 48.08. So while it will only generate an additional 15% revenue for the water utility as a whole, it is, the impact on the different areas is different.
So again, in recapping, since this slide was not on for the folks online, at 2,000 gallons, on, just using the first one here of the West Side, it went from 36, if you stick to 2,000 gallons, to 20.72.
Yes.
And then Robin's Nest went from 21.86 to 20.72.
Yes.
And the Crystal Oaks went from 21.50 to 20.72.
Yes.
Looking at that top line going left to right. Okay, so the folks online now can look at where it is that they live and how many gallons that they think they use. Keep in mind, in the summer, it gets skewed because people water their grass, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
And also, understand that the analysis that, that we did here at Cedar Lake, where we determined that 2,000 was that cutoff, we, Neil, we did not get any pushback at all from the O U C C on that whatsoever. We didn't even get a question.
No.
We got nothing. So I, I don't, the Consumer Counselor, and just so that you understand, I got my start in 1993 at the Consumer Counselor's office for the state of Indiana. So I, I really feel like they would have pushed back if they felt it should have been lower. And they didn't. And so we felt, we felt very comfortable, I think the council did, going, and Chris, going forward with it, with the filing for this. And then, like I said, we never got challenged whatsoever on that whatsoever.
So go further into the rates now, Sue, to the, as we look at 4,000 gallon current rate to new rate, and then the system-wide average monthly residential consumption, which is 4,769 gallons, what that would look like on a person's bill on the average consumption. So go through those other rates, if you would, please.
Okay, well, on the 4,000 gallons, understand that was the old minimum for Robin's Nest and for the West Side and Lakeside, which would have been the 36.04. And they'll now pay 41.44 on the West Side, Lakeside area. Robin's Nest at 4,000 gallons was still at 21.86, the minimum for them. And they will go to the 41.44. And then Crystal Oaks at current rates for 4,000 gallons was $28.50, and they will go to the 41.44. And then on the bottom, the average, the average consumption system-wide, so I averaged all of the rest, and I understand these are all residential, okay? They will differ for meter size, because their minimum would be different based on the meter size too. The, this is 4,769 system-wide. And so it goes to, the current rate is 41.82 on Robin's Nest, I mean, I'm sorry, West Side. And then it goes to 48.04. And it is currently for 4,769 gallons, 25.28 for Robin's Nest, and it will go to the 48.08. And then on Crystal Oaks, for 4,769, it will be, it is 33.88. And then it will go to 48.08.
And Mr. President, I, I think you may have made this comment earlier, but from the time the town acquired both utilities, the rates have not changed.
Right, so the Robin's Nest rate has been in place since 1994.
February 2nd, 1994.
Right, and the Crystal Oaks rate, was that 2005? Was that before that?
I think it was before that. That's, please understand that Robin's Nest and Crystal Oaks were never regulated utilities through the I U R C. They were for-profit utilities.
Right.
But they fell off the radar.
Somehow. Somehow.
Somehow. But, so I can't really, I can't really tell on Crystal Oaks, but I know it came after Robin's Nest.
And then the Utilities Inc., which is the West Side, that rate hasn't changed since 2005. And if you go further into utility rates in the town, the town in 2017 did a stormwater rate increase, which, which was the first rate increase since the inception of the stormwater rates, which was 2004. Dave's a bit of a historian, since he was here for all of it. And then the sewer rates have not changed for the sanitary sewer since 1997.
98.
98. Okay, so.
Went up $18.
It, kind of the history of the town has shown that this is not something that anybody likes to do too often. And when you make changes to rates, you really have to find ways at that point for the utility to be efficient, live within its means, and invest in the right kinds of projects to sustain it. So those are the goals that are no different with this water rate increase. The goals are the same. Invest in the utility, improve it. And as the lady in the back said, as the community grows, look for ways to shrink the cost per unit and be able to make sure that we can sustain or reduce rates in the future. So that's always the goal, is to have that revenue stream to continue the investment, continue the improvement, without continuing to push up against our ratepayers, because these sorts of things aren't ever easy to do. It's going to be a hit on people's wallets. There's no doubt about it. It's not a fun thing for anybody to do. Unfortunately, it is a necessary thing if we're going to keep a municipal utility in, in the water business. Like I say, the other option is to sell it, and then we lose all of the control and all of the ability to utilize our water utility for all the things that we utilize it for. Does anybody have any questions on those rates that you'd like to ask while we're still on this subject? Just feel free to ask a question, and we'll do everything we can to make sure we answer it.
This is the gun deal?
Yes, this has gone through over two years of, of work, and yes, it's, it's done.
Yeah, and who made it? Did the board make it, the council make that?
The utility board made that. Yeah, which is the council, same thing.
But it's based on the Indiana Radio Foreign Commission telling us to do this, correct?
Right, so part of having that higher system development charge, John, was this was a stipulation of it, is we had to make all the rates the same. So we had to find a way to do that and be able to support all of the utility projects that we have.
So basically, just me and the wife, and we live on the West Side, will we get any increase?
If you only use 2,000 gallons.
Yeah, I'll take that question.
Okay.
Hey, John, you know, it's, it's kind of a funny thing to say, but the truth of the matter is, you know, water conservation in every utility is important. So when people approach it with some conservation in mind, they can save some more money. But that's the idea, is that when there's just two people living in a home, or folks on a fixed income, or they're snowbirds, they're not paying such a high charge when they use less water than what the minimum used to be. So we could provide a little relief on the lower end, but we still had to raise the revenues on the upper end in order to support the improvements, necessary upgrades to the current infrastructure as well as new infrastructure that needs to be installed.
Even if we use 4,000 gallons on the West Side, will we still be dropping about $5 each?
No, you'll actually be going up about $5.
On the West Side.
On the West Side.
On the West Side, John.
West Side will be going up.
Yeah.
Oh, wait, I thought we got 2,000.
Because on the West Side, what is the current rate now?
Current rate for 4,000 gallons is 36.04.
Okay, because I have my utility bill, I use 34.70, and it says line average is $38.50.
That's with tax.
With tax.
Yeah. So there's still tax on it of 7%.
Yeah.
So John, your, your bill, in your case, you'll go down from 36.04 to $20.72.
If you take less showers.
Lots of less showers. Come to the planning commission, you may shower on Wednesday.
Mr. President, Randy, we do have one question online.
Okay. We, we have a question online?
Hello? Yes, sir, can you hear me?
What's the question?
Can you hear me?
Cliff.
Can you hear me?
Just speak to the microphone, you can hear me.
And Cliff, um, just a little note, folks that are watching on YouTube cannot see the slides. Uh, do we know for sure if they can see them on Zoom?
Yes.
See the slides? Okay, 'cause I had somebody watching YouTube said they could not.
Can someone read the question?
Uh, what's the question from online?
Can we unmute them, or?
Don't delete it, Jen.
Nope, I'm not touching.
I do like your idea, though, John, that's a classic.
I think you gotta drag that other window up maybe.
No, 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 Cliff, do it right now.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. Okay, Angela's unmuted.
Yeah, hello, can you hear me now?
Can we hear us?
Are you able to hear me?
Angela, can you hear us?
I can hear you, can you?
Ron Live.
I can hear you, but I don't know if you can hear me.
Well, if, if she comes on, we'll make sure that she has the opportunity to have her question answered.
Any other folks in the...
Any other online people got their hand raised or typed in a question?
No, just Angela for now.
So a sample utility bill was handed out, uh, as you see there. Um, and Chris talked a little bit about this, when this will take effect. We have the water rates will take effect in the third quarter of this year at some point. Uh, there's still some, a couple of little loose ends to tie up, uh, but, uh, we have a certain waiting period prescribed by the IURC, then we can roll the new rates in. Uh, Neil is already in the process of designing some of the infrastructure improvements, including the new water tower on the East Side, which again will, uh, definitely help with fire suppression, uh, consistent water pressures, and the quality of the product, uh, that's received by the customers.
And Mr. President?
Yes.
I believe that Cliff Rowe is working on putting an online calculator...
Okay.
...available on our website.
Good.
For folks that they could go in and plug in their, their typical water usage and get an idea of what their new, uh, cost would be on a monthly basis.
So Cliff is working on that?
He is working on that, correct?
He is.
It'll be under cedarlakein.org/utility-rates.
Okay, so...
Do you anticipate having, having all of that online in the next week or so?
So in the next week or so, for anybody watching online, or anyone in the audience here, uh, our, uh, technology guru Cliff is working on putting a calculator online so you can plug in, uh, some of your utility bills to see what the difference is going to be in rates for yourself. What's that?
He said it works.
It works?
It's working out.
Okay. So it's, uh, cedarlakein.org/...
...slash, utility-rates.
Utility-rates. So, uh, look for that calculator online and plug your bills into that to get an accurate, uh, reading of how it will impact your personal budget.
Okay, so I have a question, Mr. President. This sample utility bill shows the 4,769 gallons. Is this something, Jen, that we did as a mock, or is this actually what we use?
That's the average usage.
Go ahead, Jen.
Right, but this, I don't have a water bill. So is this our bill?
Yes, this is, this is what it looks like when the customer receives it in the mail from Litha Prep.
I recognize that she's added the 4,769, so this is just an exact bill that a customer gets.
Yes, so the customer will be able to see their previous readings, their present readings, what their total consumption was, and what the charge is.
Thank you.
Plus, it also less the stormwater, the garbage service, and the sewer.
Right, we are one utility billing.
Yeah, it's just all in one bill. Yeah, and, and again, um, if Cedar Lake had all 5,000-plus addresses that were customers of the water utility, we probably wouldn't be here tonight. Um, but the fact of the matter is, it's a fragmented community. It always has been from its, uh, development side, and, uh, we, we don't have as many customers as a lot of other water utilities. We hope someday to get there, and, uh, that would provide a much more stable business model.
Yeah, and I would say about, what, 2008 or '10, we connected, or the prior utility company connected the water tower to Havenwood, and the same for Robbins Nest to Crystal Oaks.
Again, that, that water tower was all about fire suppression.
That's right.
Um, was Angela able to get back online and, uh, get her question?
She's offline now.
She may have gotten an answer, but...
Okay, maybe we said some of the right things to answer it. So again, uh, this is...
She called the realtor.
We haven't gone to, to Phil Fasenda tonight. Now, Phil has done a lot of work on our, uh, bonds as our bond counsel. Um, when we're planning these large-scale projects, uh, obviously we're not sitting with $4 million of cash in the bank.
Mr. President?
Yes, sir.
That's what the online, uh, bill rate was up for them.
Okay.
If I, you want me to just... ...for a minute or six?
If, if, just give me a sec, I want to turn to Phil about, um, uh, bonds and, uh, what we're doing to keep costs low as it relates to debt service as we tackle what are some pretty large-scale projects. Phil, go ahead.
So, um, those who, previously, and as Sue mentioned, um, some of the history with regard to the, the bond issue. So, um, obviously, um, there, as, as President Neumar just said, we don't have the funds on hand in the water utility to take on and pay for, um, uh, for these additional infrastructure improvements that are necessary. So, um, we'll, we'll need to go out with a bond. The council, uh, back when, um, we were not, um, uh, through the IURC procedure as we are now, um, it was thought, and this is also pre-COVID, or pretty close to pre-COVID, um, the thought was that, uh, that we would go to the general marketplace and, and, um, authorize an issuance of bonds to pay for these projects and go out to the marketplace. And, you know, as everyone knows, the rates the last several years have been attractive, okay? Now, they're, they're very, very attractive right now, still out in the marketplace, but the state, during the process of the rate approvals, and the state has to approve our, the debt for the, um, for the municipal utility as well, um, the state suggested that, uh, well, more than suggested perhaps, that, that, that we, that we look at, um...
Very strong suggestion.
Yes, a very strong suggestion. And it's sort of like, if you want your rates case approved, you should, you, we, we would like you to go through the state revolving fund. Now, as Sue, as Sue Hayes just said, the state revolving fund has very attractive rates. It's, it's more expensive on the front end to go through the state revolving fund because of costs, okay? But the, the rate that you end up with at the end of the day, and Sue said 2%, and, 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 you know, depending on stimulus, we, we could do even better than that. Um, at the end of the day, it, it's more process, it, it, you know, again, it takes us longer. We, the, the town council actually adopted, um, a bond ordinance, um, uh, first part of last year, that, um, we'll have to revise and bring back to the council, because the state revolving fund requires certain, um, provisions within, with, that the, that the, um, that the town council has to agree to. That will be part of the revised, uh, resolution that we do. Um, but at the end of the day, uh, even though there will be more costs on the front end, the, the rate, uh, should be better. Um, and I think it will be better. Um, so it, it will be worth the time and the effort.
One of the things I wanted to cover tonight was all the money that had to be spent out of the current water utility collections, because we're a member of the IURC. So these people sitting here at this table, um, our town attorney obviously, you know, bills us for his services on a regular basis, and at a quite low rate. Um, our utility engineer, Nisa, again, treats us very fairly, but had a lot of hours of extra work in this. Um, our, uh, utility counsel, uh, Chris Chinak, had a great deal of work. Um, Sue Hayes, although she's a part of the town now, we still pay her per hour, and, uh, our bond counsel, Phil Fasenda. So all of these people sitting here don't work for free. And if we weren't a part of the IURC, not saying that we wouldn't use some of that service, um, but not to near the degree and the amount of work that was done. And I was on a lot of the conference calls, and, uh, it would make you nauseous, uh, some of the time that was spent answering the same questions worded differently over and over and over again. Uh, so Sue, do you have, uh, kind of a omnibus number for us of, I, I don't even know if I want to hear it, but tell us anyways.
Okay, what I'll preface it with is, in the rate case, we have to come up with some kind of estimate to put in there. And understand that we don't expect to have to change these rates in two years, okay? So in, working with Chris, and he looked at other, um, similar utilities and other more recent cases in front of the IURC, we came up with an estimate to use that we thought would be acceptable to the I, to the IURC and the OUCC that we would use in the rate case, knowing that we may not hit it. In other words, we'd go over it. And so we used $200,000, and we amortized it over five years, which means every year, the rates only took into effect to $40,000 a year. So if we had, if actually we had spent $200,000, it would take the water utility five years to recoup that spending, okay? Um, what I did is I looked at the regulatory attorney, the local attorney, the engineer, uh, accounting when I was with a firm, which was substantially different rate than accounting that I am an employee of the town, and the IURC OUCC fees that we have to pay for the pleasure of filing our rate case with them. Uh, to date, that is $399,617.40. So we are about $200,000, well, for all intents and purposes, $200,000 over what we, we said. Um, the majority of that has already been paid. Um, uh, our local attorney has graciously held his bill, um, to be paid until we're collecting rates to generate money to, uh, pay it. And then also, I wanted to tell you that because of the council deciding, uh, to hire me as an employee of the town to finish this up, uh, the town did save $45,386 for my time, okay? So in other words, if I had stayed with the previous firm, we would be right around $450,000. And we're not done, because remember, when we do issue the debt, then we have to go back and true up the rates. So that will be all...
And part of that true-up is going to include, um, a readjustment of a system-wide system development charge, which means we're probably gonna have to shrink the one on the East Side and raise the one on the West Side a little bit...
Yes.
...of the initial hookup as part of this. So we don't know where that number will land yet until, uh, we issue the debt.
But that doesn't affect these folks.
It doesn't. It affects people that are building homes, and as part of the permit fees that they pay.
That's right.
Um, but that's still a step on the road, and as Sue said, there's still gonna be more consulting fees to go with that. So as you can see, uh, the cost of doing business within a bureaucracy is not cheap. Um, and it's, it's unfortunate, you know, Cedar Lake is a young utility here, and I hope that sometime in the future, whoever sits in these seats decides to withdraw from the IURC, because that gives the customers even more control of their utility, uh, rather than having to pay all of these exorbitant costs that get rolled into your bills, basically. Um, it's just ridiculous. Uh, and that's why most utilities have withdrawn from it, because they, they just can't make the adjustments they need to make to support their infrastructure in a responsible manner without having to hire a team of people to do it. So, uh, hopefully whoever sits up here makes that decision in the next several years, once this is all over, to move on.
President.
Mr. Austin, uh, you want to move the microphone down?
It occurs to me, as I'm hearing this explanation, that when the town council made the election several years ago to withdraw from the jurisdiction of the commission, that we had this discussion about fees, costs, and expenses. Laid it on the line in this room, on this dais, after inviting you to come to a meeting and complain, object, agree, disagree. It, it's okay, but to come here and be heard, well, we talked about the fees and the rates and charges, nowhere near what Sue has reported are actual charges, but estimates at the time for the withdrawal, and then the conduct of the business of this water utility here in Cedar Lake. Everything you heard tonight, every single syllable of what you heard tonight would have been discussed on the floor of this meeting hall would have been available for public inspection, would have been subject to interrogation or questioning or dialogue or explanation or questioning, whatever you deemed appropriate here on this floor. And we would have been in a position where this didn't take the two and a half years to get to this point. It is. It's clearly an accounting and legal process, but handled locally would have been a mere fraction of cost and time. I do this for a living. I do it in other municipalities. I promise you, water rates and sewer rates and rate charges that are handled locally in the community before the legislative body do not have this type process, and do not have this exposure, and do not have this cost in all respects. So at the point in time when it's appropriate, it would, it would be, and you know what my recommendation has been for a long time, the withdrawal should be pursued. We're not in a position to do that this second because of circumstances we sit in, in process, but there's a day coming, and it's pretty soon.
As my friend Greg Parker would say, the only people that benefit from doing business with the government are lawyers and accountants. So, uh, nothing against lawyers and accountants.
Yeah, I was just gonna say, sorry folks.
I'm glad that, I'm glad that we have the team that we have. They did a phenomenal job. But it's true, when you start to weave your way through, uh, the bureaucratic mess, um, nobody, no average people win in that thing. So Dave is right, and, uh, I guess it's not on the table right now. This is something a couple of years out that will need to be considered as we move forward.
And to wit, in 1997, here in this meeting hall, we handled a sanitary sewer rate increase of 60%. It was a lot. It was handled here, it invited, it was, it was all the public hearing notices where our citizens, our ratepayers were invited. And this room was filled, and everybody had a chance, and it was discussed, and it was explained, and it was provided, uh, all information was provided. And at the end of the day, an ordinance was adopted, and citizens knew where they stood, their elected officials, at a fraction of the time and cost.
So what you're saying is that if we were out of this...
IURC.
If they're saying 4,000 plus?
Yeah, I, I, I'm not saying the exact amount, John, but I'm saying a mere fraction would have been the cost.
Yeah, a hundred grand. We would have saved...
Save, you save six, you just save six figures. Let me, let me give it to you. I give you six figures. I, I, I can't, I can't predict.
I understood, but I'm just saying that we, therefore, the rates would have to be raised or adjusted to where they are adjusted to now because you're spending less money.
Well, and we also possibly could have even had a higher system development charge to charge than people moving in a little bit more, which would have decreased the rate pressure. But we couldn't go any higher than that, because the OUCC, which the, is the Office of Utility Consumer Counselor, and the IURC, the Indiana Utility Regulatory Commission, said that that was our limit, basically, that 2,500. So if we could have gone to 3,500, it would have changed that equation. And if you have local control, you can do that. If you've got to go through a bureaucracy, you're kind of at their mercy. They do their own analysis.
And the meetings are all downstate, right?
Yeah.
There, there was a public hearing on this proceeding.
Yeah, in Indianapolis.
That public hearing was, was given notice, and if you wanted to go to Indianapolis, you could. You could have been heard. Chris was there, he answered... Chris was there, he handled, he represented us, and made certain that the town's position on its petition was advocated. But you could have gone there if you'd have wanted.
And and I don't, Mary, Mary Joan and Kathy attend a lot of our meetings, and we've had on every utility board meeting over the last year, water rates has been a part of the agenda. Because if anybody shows up to meetings, we want that stuff to be on there transparently that, hey, I got a question about this. Okay? We're we're willing to answer and dive in as much as we can because we were a part of the bureaucratic process at that point. So kind of at their mercy.
And I asked that we have a meeting like this, and they said we had to wait till we got all of our information provided to us. And I really expected this place to be packed tonight.
And and this is not a meeting that was required as part of the process. This is something we wanted to make sure we did to make sure all the information was out there.
I wasn't quite sure what was going to transpire tonight. And I want to say I want to thank everybody sitting here, the board, the council, the town staff, and I think you did a hell of a job explaining the strokes. And I brought my heavies with me. They were kind of outside.
John, I I noticed that you came. You came with protection.
But I think I think you guys did a heck of a job explaining to us, and I appreciate that. I think you're welcome.
Well, thanks for that comment.
Yeah, thanks, John.
And I also think that Jen, still interested in that water bill, he could be able to add eight thousand dollars.
Hey, you're up. I wish I could, believe you me, my well went out a year ago.
Yeah, and and, you know, that's another thing that you're you see in some communities that still have wells is these aquifers are drying up and wells are going out and they're, I mean, what did you spend to replace that?
Nearly 10,000.
Nearly 10,000?
Yeah.
I mean, and and that's if you can find good potable water in the ground because of all the pressure on the aquifers. So it's it's a tricky thing, the water resource right now, and it's very tedious across the country. There's a lot of areas that are just searching for water. I was listening today to what Joliet's going through right now. They have, by their estimation, with the aquifers they pulled out, of 10 years of water left. That's it. They're trying to build a, was it a $10 million pipeline?
Billion.
Or was it 100 million?
One billion.
One billion dollar pipeline?
From Lake Michigan.
From Lake Michigan? Holy smokes.
They're discussing going with Hammond or Chicago. They said if they go with Hammond, they will be able to sell water to neighboring communities.
But but that's the reality of what's faced right now with our aquifers. There's just not enough water underground anymore to supply.
Water is the Achilles' heel for most communities.
Randy, there's a question.
Question?
There's a question online.
Okay.
How are they going to control the communities in Cedar Lake that have HOAs like Beacon Point? And they have outside sprinkling, which is paid for with their annual dues. A lot of those residents are on fixed incomes and are two-member households, so those residents are still going to wind up paying higher dues to make for the town's billing of the water for those communities. So those residents will not be protected like the council is trying to do for the people who don't use a lot of home water.
Well, I HOAs are one of these things that we don't have a lot of control of. So when people move into neighborhoods with HOAs, you know the covenants when you move in there. And there's not much we can do as a council to change that. You have the free ability to assemble an HOA, and we don't regulate HOAs. So I don't know what to say other than going to your HOA board and looking for some conversation and dialogue and possible relief on something like that. Dave, can you speak to that?
Randy, one of the things that was talked about here last year, and will be talked about again this spring, I presume, is a very narrow component of this, but it would be sprinkling controls.
Yeah.
Sprinkling regulations. We really need to look at that and be ahead of it this year, not behind it. That will help some. It won't be palatable for those who want really green grass, but it will be better for the totality of the communities that are served in that fashion.
And what Dave's talking about, and we've discussed it at a utility board meeting, was going to a, you can sprinkle certain, you know, even-numbered addresses on certain days and odd-numbered addresses on certain days. A lot of communities do it as a way to conserve water. So we we wouldn't be the only one, actually, every community around us has sprinkling regulations.
But it was only during the drought. It was not all year.
Well, that's what's up in the conversation.
It's only as a part of the lack of rain for so many days.
But it's it's one of those things that could be considered at a public meeting as as part of it. I'm not saying that it's been overly discussed.
I'm not a fan of more government, more rules. I like less common sense.
Well, you're living in the Wild West on Parrish Avenue.
Yeah.
The rest of us civilized society that have to pay.
Doing it all year, to me, is putting handcuffs on freedom.
Randy, I don't live in an HOA. But wouldn't the HOA have their own water? You know, wouldn't they have their own?
Not necessarily.
It's a board.
No, no, what I'm saying.
Your own utility?
No, no. They wouldn't be taking the water that's coming to my, coming through my meter and watering the lawns with it.
Right, right.
So so that so that shouldn't affect her bill at all. That should that should be the HOA's bill.
I think what you're saying, Rob, is the HOA is is charging each of the residents for the water that's consumed to do the sprinkling of the general grounds. Well, that that water should be metered, and the HOA, we're billing the HOA for that use, and the HOA is spreading that cost among its HOA members. And the individual homeowner doesn't have control over how much water the HOA is using.
So if that is.
But it's still metered use.
If they sucked it out of the retention ponds, that's a cost too. But that would be a way around it.
If that individual homeowner is paying the minimum rate of 2072, but the HOA is charging to sprinkle, like Rick said, the general grounds of the subdivision, then they are actually paying a little more for water at that point. But that's part of living in an HOA.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, that's not.
The grass goes up every year, the snowbath.
There's pluses and minuses to HOAs, for sure.
Yeah, good job, Randy.
Any other questions?
Um, no, I don't see any hands raised and no notes from Clip at the moment.
Any other final question, sir?
Once we go into the $2,000, $2,000 gallon rate, my last bill was $21.60. At that rate, I would automatically go into the 3,000. I would not be charged $160 gallons of water, but I'd be charged for the full 3,000.
Yes, it goes per thousand rate, yeah.
Okay, and then the second one I have is this rate is just on water, not on the drainage, sanitation, and wastewater.
Correct, there's no change to any of those, this is just water.
Which I think are, all of these are very high. I paid for my Swigel, and I paid half of this every two months. My bills were in the $50 for all of this for two months.
How much higher were your property taxes?
Very.
It's a give and take.
With all these little extras, even though I'm paying a lot less tax a little bit, I'll be getting close to what I was paying in Illinois. If I am in an HOA, I'm 40 degrees, and your vehicle taxes are absurd.
Yeah, there's there's a give and take to everything, you know, it's.
And as I say, these water rates are twice as much.
There's.
That's correct.
Every two months.
Yeah, and and again, that goes back to.
What if this wastewater has $48? Is that sanitation water that has to go through the water reformation center?
That that's sewer, that's sanitary sewer.
Yes, wastewater.
That's when you flush your toilet.
Yeah.
Water goes down the drain.
That $48 a month, that's a flat rate, sorry. That's that's pretty high.
Yeah, and and the way I always explain it to folks, sir, is the town's 53 years old, but really, it's about 50 because when it first got founded in the late 60s, it was in litigation for a couple of years. Okay, so let's just use 50 as an around number. So all of the roads that were here and existed were not a part of the town until they took over the town, right? So they had to dig up this entire town and put in a sewer system, and we did a joint local agreement with this town of Lowell. So as we own 50% of the sewer treatment plant in Lowell, and all of the wastewater gets pumped from here to Lowell. So that is part of the reason why, if you're a small community that started 80 years ago, and you start with a little neighborhood, and then it grew and it grew, the developers put in all that infrastructure out of the gate. Now, today, in 2021, we're seeing these developers now put in the sewers, and they're paying for all that. And that ultimately, you folks are when you buy a house because you're paying more for the lot, right? But that is how I'd like to try to explain why it's $48 as opposed to some other cities and towns.
And to expand on what John's saying, and I understand your thoughts, it is high in comparison. We've done with our partner in Lowell, over $10 million of upgrades to the current treatment plant. The project we're working on right now in Cedar Lake is about 13 to 16 million for the total for three phases of what we call our our West Side Interceptor project. We also have to do an East Side Interceptor improvement. And with the financial condition of the sewer utility, normally, rates, when you do large projects like that, go up a dollar per million so that you spend. But with our condition, the rate pressure's not there. So we're able to invest in these projects without having to raise our rates. So that's something, the rate's been the same since 1998 because there's been good responsible stewardship of the money. And, yeah, it's a little more. And but John was right, we're we're a, our our community, when the sewers were first put in, was that in the early 70s?
73.
Yeah. So we are behind the game. Most people had sewers already for 100 years at that point. And then in the 80s, the sewer system went into receivership of IDEM and was given orders to do certain things because there was so many problems with it. So, yeah, it's been behind the eight ball a long time, but we still think Cedar Lake is a great place to live, and I hope you do, too.
I do.
Good.
When I was a kid, 40s and the 50s, you used to come here to the lake on a Sunday for picnic and swimming and stuff. My dad, he was, we came from Chicago, my dad, he was Lake Michigan. He always came here. That was a big, big thing for us. We used to come to, I don't know if anybody remembers, Two East Resort?
Yep.
That's where we used to come. And live two or three times a summer. Now I live here.
Well, sir, I'm glad you're here from my Swigel. Thanks for moving here.
And part of the reason why the bill is so high, we've got terrain here in Cedar Lake where we pump stuff up, we pump it back down. We have more, we have more lift stations here in Cedar Lake than the city of Gary has.
Yeah.
And we've got to maintain.
We're happy here, I just.
Good.
Little high for me.
Your 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 thoughts are welcome here, and we're glad that you're here.
You can lessen this by saying, basically, you're charging a penny a gallon for for water. That's what I'm figuring out here real quick. If you go to Stracks and buy a gallon of water, it's $1.29, $1.30. So basically, here's my deal.
But I I like how you're you're putting a nice little.
Yeah. I just paid $2 for this on the way home from Wisconsin.
Well, we appreciate.
I have to buy this still one if I see that, and that's what you tell.
We appreciate your comments, and thanks for coming. Hope you attend some meetings in the future. Mary Joan, do you have a question?
Mrs. Meyer, is there a water tower and such? Is this project also included atlas of all these water systems that you inherited? They're a purchase for.
That's a good question.
Yeah, the the atlas has been a living document since we started working on it diligently in 2014. So if I were to give an estimate, it's probably 70% done by now. But what we have done is, as every development comes in, part of the section even development standards requires them to submit as well to us in a digital format in CAD that we can directly import into our atlas that costs the rate payers absolutely nothing because it's it's being done by the developer. So it's, there's still some work to go, but we're recommending as part of this is the capital improvement plan, is public works, get a new GPS unit, and and collect a lot of data themselves because, frankly, there's there's things that you need an engineer for, there's things that you don't. And that kind of data collection, you can have at staff level, when they're out doing heater reads, checking on hydrants, doing flushing, that they're collecting side data that costs no more time to do, is a is a benefit to us and and the whole system. That's a long way to answer it, yes.
No, thank you.
We would expect no less from you, Neil. There was one question online of, is there a sprinkler rate?
The sprinklers go through the lock rates as everything else. My understanding is that we are, we separately meter sprinklers. Yes, we do. So they are on a separate meter themselves.
Right. Yeah, so the answer is.
So you wouldn't pay sewage or anything for that? It costs strictly water.
It's just, well, and we don't pay sewage anyway.
We don't meter, we don't meter stormwater or sewer, so it's a flat rate for both. So there's no meter attached to that.
So for the HOA, they just pay strictly whatever the water is.
Yep. Okay, any other questions?
Well, Mr. President, just a clarification for the gentleman here in the front. You said your your average water usage is 2,001.
It's over 2,000.
Yeah, so I just want to make sure you understand that, first of all, it's $10.36 per thousand dollars, per thousand gallons used, regardless of whether you're at 1,000, 2,000, whatever. So it's just your your usage, 2,135 gallons times $10.36 per thousand gallons. So your usage, it it, you're not going to jump up to the 2072 to 3108. You're not going to jump up to that because you've gone over 2,000 gallons. And I I think I've got an impression that that's what you thought.
That's what I thought, that I wanted to go into 3,000.
No, sir, no, sir. You will get, you will.
Thanks for clarifying that, Rick.
160 gallons.
Yes, yes. At at $10.36 per thousand.
A penny a gallon.
Right. So you're, yeah, exactly.
I'm out, Joe, I'm sorry.
Yeah, that's exactly right. Your bill will be about $22.
It'll be $1.60.
Right, yeah, yes.
Conserve water, right?
I can love that.
Yep, there you go. All right, well, thank you all for attending. Thank everybody online. Appreciate the opportunity to present this tonight. And if you have any further questions in the future, come to meetings.
I'll come to the discussion.
Discrimatory.
I got my discussion.
Randy, great.
There you go.
Because there's just not.
Good answer.